Meeting of Union County Board of Commissioners to order. I move that. Please join me for the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for this time for allowing us to call on your name. Dear Lord, we ask you'd be with us through this meeting tonight. Lord, lead us and guide us in all that we do. Make sure, Lord, that we make good decisions in what we do. Lord, that you're proud of us, dear Lord. We ask that you would be with the people in the path that were in the path of Hurricane Helene, dear Lord. We know people have lost their families and their jobs, their houses and everything. We just ask that you would show up big in their lives. Lord, bless them and help them. Lord, be with all of them, dear Lord, for the days to come. Lord, I ask you to be with the volunteers and everybody that's there to help them with their recovery. Lord, lead us and guide us in all that we do. Be with this board, help us. Thank you for my colleagues. Please continue to bless them and lead us and guide us in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. No one has signed up to speak for the informal comments. We'll ask if, is anybody here that hasn't signed up that would like to speak? Okay, that being the case, the next three items on our agenda are public hearings for rezonings. Before opening the public hearing, I will read the rules that will apply for any members of the public wishing to speak on any remarks by giving their names stating whether they are residents of Union County and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. The first public hearing is item 24668 for rezoning petition CZ 2024-002 LI. I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner, for comments from county staff. Mr. Hansen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is the first of two rezonings that are interrelated. They are from the same property owners, so I've named them for what zoning classification they're requesting the rezoning to. So this is the LI component. The next one you're going to hear from is the RA 40 component. So there's a lot of words here, and the reason why is because this is really a property line cleanup request between multiple properties. The owners of the properties have a industrial business that's on light industrial zoning. Part of it is on RA 40 zoning. Conversely, they have a house that is primarily on RA 40, but a portion of it is on light industrial zoning. They want to clean up the property lines for proper business management. So this site plan is what I'll get to in a moment, but there are fractions of a couple parcels that are impacted by this. Ultimately, it will result in an existing business that will have conditional zoning applied to it, and the remainder of their light industrial property would not have the conditions associated with it. So the property, or I'm sorry, the survey on the right shows what's actually being requested rezoned, which is this triangular piece adjacent to the house. The business is right here. And then over here with the colors, it shows the parcels and then the new properties that would be created. The one in yellow would be the existing business, that would be the conditional zoning. Then the one in blue would be the remaining industrial property that would not have conditions associated with it. So there's no changes in use proposed as a part of this. This is on 601 South, several miles south of the Monroe city limits. Here's the site, shows the existing seed cleaning operation. Again, looking south on 601, multi-lane road. Looking east, there's a church, and then looking north on 601, again, multi-lane road. So development status, a lot of large lot residential and agricultural uses. In terms of environmental features, it's pretty established pasture land, the business operation, the house immediately to the north. No wetlands or streams or floodplains on the site. The zoning, you can see the light industrial zoning, a small portion of business that's not a part of this request, but it is immediately to the north. This is the house. So you'd really be taking this portion right here and rezoning it to light industrial and combining it with these two blue parcels to the south, which are already zoned light industrial. The remainder of the area is RA 40. In terms of transportation, there's no funded road improvements in the area, approximately 13,000 vehicles a day on US 74, or I'm sorry, 601. And then Claude Austin and Carl Funderburke have very low traffic volumes. In terms of land use map, US 601 South is identified as an employment corridor. It doesn't mean that every property is appropriate for business or industrial uses, but if the site development works in terms of utilities and road access and adjacent uses, then industrial uses are recommended. So this would be seen as consistent with the land use map. Because this was commercial in nature, the school system wasn't involved. There's no change in the utility access, it wouldn't use water, or I'm sorry, well and septic. There was a community meeting held in August with no attendees. No one spoke at the land use board. Monroe was not consulted due to the distance of the city limits. Note the negatives in terms of potential future industrial rezonings and proximity to existing residential uses. Could increase traffic on 601 South with subsequent additional industrial rezonings, but there's an existing business on the proposed parcel. This will help give them flexibility with their existing use. It is an employment corridor, so it's a multi-lane road, US route. Industrial uses are more appropriate and will help clean up the parcel lines given the consistency of the zoning for the business. So we recommended approval and the planning board recommended approval at a September meeting. And I looked in the audience before I got up and I want to make sure that the applicant is not here in case I wanted to say anything about it. And I do not see them.
Any questions for Mr. Hansen? Since the applicant's not here, are there anybody, nobody signed up to speak at this public hearing? Is anybody in the audience that hasn't signed up that would like to speak? All right, I will now close this public hearing. The next public hearing on our agenda is item 24670 for zoning petition 2024-RZ009 Russell. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. The next public hearing on our agenda is item 24669 for zoning petition CZ 2024-001 R48, RA 40. I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen again, Senior Planner, for comments from county staff.
Thank you, sir. You've heard a lot of the same information, same dynamic portions of the parcels being combined to create a residential zone parcel in the middle. You can see the gray. It is a part of this request, but it would immediately get rezoned to light industrial as a part of the preceding request. And then the green piece would be its own parcel, but not necessarily part of this action. Their intention is to combine it with this agricultural parcel behind it. So that is the request. The specific piece that's being rezoned is on the right-hand side right here. It's just this triangle up in the front. The remainder are just revising the property lines. So same information. This is the house. Again, the development status in the area, environmental features, the zoning, transportation, land use plan, schools. And we recommended approval and the planning board recommended approval.
Any questions for Mr. Hansen? Okay, the applicant is not here on this.
That's the same applicant.
Is anyone here that, no one's signed up to speak? Is anyone here that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak at this public hearing? We have no one to speak, so I'll now close this public hearing. The next public hearing on our agenda is item 24670 for rezoning petition 2024-RZ009 Russell. I will open the public hearing and again recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner, for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Russell rezoning for the property owner. It's RZ, meaning there are no conditions. There's no site plan being proposed as a part of this, so it's just rezoning from one classification to another. It's approximately 25 acres in the Monroe Township from RA 40 to RA 200, and there are no conditions associated with this request. This is the site. It's back off of Austin-Cheney Road. This is an area on the past year or so. Looking south on 60, or I'm sorry, on Austin-Cheney, it's a two-lane road. Across the street is the county's transfer station. And looking north on Austin-Cheney, again, rural residential, two-lane road serving it. Terms of land cover, this is from 2020. You can see that quite a bit of it is cleared. Remainder is pasture land and forested. In terms of environmental features, the northern and southern boundaries are floodplain from a stream. A man-made pond has been created in the middle of the site. Terms of zoning, the entire area is zoned RA 40. Transportation, Austin-Cheney has a fairly low traffic count, higher percentage of trucks, obviously associated with the county facility, but there's no funded road improvements in the area. Land use plan, this area is recommended for rural residential, which is consistent with what's already out there, one acre lots, single-family residential. In terms of schools, because this rezoning request is a downzoning, lower density potential, Union County schools were not consulted, and because no uses are proposed but public waters available along Austin-Cheney Road, can't really speak about the utilities. Public feedback, no community meeting was required as a part of a straight rezoning request. Several residents have called expressing concerns over the previous landfill operations on the site. Monroe and Unionville were not consulted due to the distance to their municipal limits. In terms of the staff report and recommendation, quite a few negatives associated with it. There's also several positives. The negatives are talking about what's possible with a special use permit under RA 200, such as larger landfills, shooting ranges. The potential uses may generate traffic impacts on nearby roads beyond what rural residential would generate. The positive is that it is a downzoning, and this area is recommended for rural residential. We can't really speculate on any kind of special use permit in the future because that's up to the Board of Adjustment to evaluate. And so the reduced development potential through a decrease in the live density on road without direct road access, because it is a couple hundred yards off of Austin-Cheney through an easement, that does reduce the development potential and the impact on emergency management because of having to drive down long gravel roads to service any kind of fire or emergency. So from a staff perspective, we recommended approval. The planning board did recommend denial at its September 17th meeting citing concerns over potential future uses of the site. And at the planning board, several local residents spoke in opposition to the previous operations at the facility and concerns over future operations.
Any questions for Mr. Hansen? Commissioner Baldwin.
The planning board. The planning board recommended denial. What was the ratio of the vote for and against?
It's unanimous.
Unanimous against?
Any other questions for Mr. Hansen? Mr. Hansen, does the applicant wish to provide comments?
I didn't see them in attendance either.
We do have some people from the public who've signed up to make comments, so I'll call them in order. Our first speaker is Bobby Griffin.
Thank you, Chairman Rowell and Commissioners and Manager and Ms. West over there, clerk. Probably need more than three minutes, but I'll try to condense what I have to say. I represent the adjoining landowners to this parcel of property out there in opposition to this application. All of the surrounding landowners to this property now are zoned RA 40. This parcel that's attempting to be rezoned is smack dab in the middle of their encirclement of this property. As he said, the planning board unanimously voted to deny this application, and I think for very good reason. It would be spot zoning in effect if you zoned this different than all of the surrounding parcels there. These people have lived out there for decades and decades as descendants of the Presleys and Stigalls, enjoying the use of their land since the county's unified development ordinance under RA 40. We suggest this does not need to be rezoned right in the middle of their property to something other than what theirs is, so they can continue to use and enjoy the benefit of the land and each other as neighbors. Now, it's a public record of what the applicant has tried to do in this parcel, and we're only here tonight because of a court order that was filed in file number 22 CVS 2410, Union County Clerk of Court entitled "Union County" versus Benjamin Russell, that found that the applicant had over and over again violated the county rules so that a court order was necessary to intervene, stop the violations, and mandate that the applicant cure the problem if he could. That's why we're here tonight. I only have three minutes, as I understand, but your own employee, Mr. King, submitted an affidavit in July of this year. This has been going on since 2021, trying to get this applicant in compliance with the rules that you people tried to enforce. They had to take him to court to get a court order. So Mr. King filed an affidavit in July of this year citing the violations that had occurred that prompted this lawsuit. Let me quickly read these, if I may, just a few of his paragraphs. Defendant continues, this is what he said in July of this year. Defendant continues to operate an illegal reclamation landfill without a permit or authorization of the county, and continues to allow materials from off-site to be brought onto this site to burn and otherwise dispose of. Well, that's a landfill operation. That's not a reclamation operation, and that's what's been occurring out there, and your employee cited that in this affidavit that was filed in that court case. February of this year, February of 2024, Officer Holt visited the property and observed multiple dump trucks filled with off-site materials entering and dumping materials on the property. April the 30th of this year, Officer Holt again visited the properties and again observed multiple dump trucks traveling to and from the property in violation of the ordinance. The county has received complaints that the defendant is continuing to burn materials at the property in violation of a previous consent order that the defendant or the applicant agreed to, and violating the own order that he agreed to uphold. Based on the site visits and observations by the county, the defendant has not ceased accepting materials from all site locations, but was continuing to in effect use that as a landfill operation, not as a reclamation site. Defendant has now posted no trespassing signs out there so the county folks could not get back in. And to date, in July, had not submitted an application to rezone, but obviously since then has done that. Seventy signatures were placed on a letter of the adjoining neighbors protesting this application that was submitted to the planning board, and I believe that would be before you, if not it should be, and we request that it be made part of the record. Those seventy people objected to that. Some of the landowners are here tonight, and a large contingency in effect is here who is opposed to this application to rezone. On behalf of these adjoining landowners, including Mrs. Betty Nance and Bill Stigall and Carol Russian and others, we respectfully appeal to you, the Commissioners, to permit these neighbors the rightful protection they deserve, to not permit a parcel of land right in the smack dab middle of the surrounding properties to be zoned anything other than what theirs is. That's spot zoning. The county does not want that. It's not good policy, and it's not good practice, and ought not be permitted. The Commissioners, we respectfully appeal to you to permit these neighbors the rightful protection they deserve, to not permit a parcel of land, as I say, to be zoned differently than theirs, right in the middle of their surrounding properties, which would absolutely, we contend, disturb their tranquility, their continued continuity and cohesiveness and peaceful uses of their land, as well as the togetherness of the neighbors. We simply ask you to do the right thing in this instance. Support the seventy neighbors who filed the letters of protest. Support your planning board, who's voted unanimously against this application. Support your unified development ordinance that classifies this parcel as RA 40, and don't segregate that parcel right in the middle of theirs to another classification. And support these adjoining landowners by denying this application. Thank you for permitting me to speak before you this evening.
Our next speaker is Betty Nance.
Okay, I would like for everyone to have a copy of this. And also a copy of this one.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I am the owner of the 60-foot ingress egress easement used by Ben Russell to get to his property. I had provided the easement to the previous owner, who then sold it to Ben Russell. I gave up two acres of farmland to provide the easement, land I had previously rented to the local farmer. I also paid for the easement to be surveyed. I felt I had been deceived by the previous owner who built the road. He told me he was going to build a beautiful house for himself. Instead, he cut the trees from the land and then sold the property. The dirt removed to build the easement was supposed to be left on my property, and I was going to sell it. That did not happen because the previous owner took it when he built the road. The current owner, Ben Russell, has destroyed the beautiful farmland by hauling loads and loads of dirt out and bringing in loads and loads of stumps to burn. The dust and smoke, as well as the noise and traffic, have caused problems for neighbors living in the adjoining areas. The requesting spot rezoning would only make things worse. This easement was not supposed to be a problem for anyone. This easement was not supposed to be a problem for anyone. Your decision could affect my family's future. My grandchildren and great-grandchildren would probably wish to use my property in the future. Mr. Russell has since January the 25th, 2022, continually violated the purpose of this land, as well as county orders. On August the 26th, 2024, 10 trucks came out with dirt and trucks with stumps brought in the next day after he was told not to until after the planning meeting. In making your recommendation, please consider how this spot rezoning in a rural farming community would impact the many citizens living in the Midway Church community. There is already a landfill right on the other side of Austin-Cheney Road. We do not need another one.
Our next speaker is Janet Johnson.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard. My name is Janet Presley Johnson. I am the proud owner of 2415 Austin-Cheney Road, Wingate, North Carolina. This property is on both sides of the road with the house built by my grandfather, Joel Wrist Presley, being directly beside the Union County Waste Transfer Station and landfill. And the property across the road is in the farm program and shares a boundary with the property in question. All of the property surrounding the parcel at 202220 Austin-Cheney Road is legacy property, being originally Presley and Stigall land. Mr. Russell's property was originally part of the JW Presley Estate as well. I am against the rezoning of the Russell property. My concerns are that the rezoning would have a negative impact on our environment and consequently our property values. Our community is already impacted greatly by the existing landfill. I firmly believe Mr. Russell intends to continue to use the property as a commercial dump with hopes of expanding its capacity. Why would the county grant another dump when there is one already existing directly across the street and operated by the county? I am also concerned that the rezoning could impact the farming aspect of my property. As you all know, the farm program in Union County is diminished due to increased housing and commercial development. We need to preserve all the farmland we can. I ask that you consider my and my neighbors' concerns for the future of our families and heirs, and deny the rezoning of 202220 Austin-Cheney Road, and I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Janice Presley.
Good afternoon. I'm Janice Presley. I worked for the county and retired from the county. I did child protective services where I tried to protect our young people. My family has 45 acres, 45-plus acres, in the back that connects next to this gentleman's property. And to say it's, it looks horrible, and it would directly affect all of our family's property in the future. Please help protect us. Please help protect us. I thank you.
Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing. Next on the agenda is item 24685, Service Award Recognition. I will recognize Jennifer Davis, Human Resources Assistant Director for this item.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and Management Team. On Thursday, September the 19th, we hosted our Q3 Service Award Ceremony to celebrate forty-three employees who had met an anniversary milestone. Of those forty-three employees, during the ceremony, we celebrated and recognized seventeen five-year recipients, one ten-year recipient, one fifteen-year recipient, three twenty-year recipients, three twenty-five-year recipients, and one thirty-year recipients. We are grateful to host these events for our employees and cherish the stories we hear behind each employee. Please join me in congratulating these employees. Thank you. We hope that you will enjoy a few key moments from the event from this short video. Welcome, everyone, to our Q3 Service Award Ceremony. I am happy to have all of you here. This is the favorite part of Monday whenever we have these, and I'm sure you will enjoy it as well. Today, we are recognizing lots and lots of people for five-year, ten-year, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and even we have a third as well. So exciting times for us today.
It's always fun to come. It's always fun to hear the stories of your fellow employees and hear all the other divisions and see how much everybody within all of the other divisions is actually appreciated. Same way you're appreciated for what you do, working for the county.
As one of the most dependable and adaptable employees that I have, she's not only that, she's also a great mentor. Her entire team is here today because they look up to her. She treats her team like family. If there's something wrong with her team, she might just show up at their door with some groceries to make sure they have what they need. Train has decided she's going to retire. And we're going to miss her a lot. Thank you for thirty years.
I was amazed at all the stories. Not surprised. It's a great place to be. It's just nice to see that everyone brings their A-game when they come here and really works towards making the public happy. And that's what Union County is really all about, is taking care of people.
So Jason has unofficially become what I had taken to calling the White Glove Customer Service. When there is a problem, this is the guy that we send. He is the guy. Because I know that when he goes out there, that problem is going to get fixed, whether it takes ten minutes or nine months, that problem is going to get fixed. And that's how valuable Jason is with Union County.
I worked in Beckmore County before I came, and a couple of the places before that. It never, it never really felt, there are good places to work, but it never really felt like a family. And honestly, when I came here, it was sort of a, a little dead as another step in my career. I never thought I would be here that long. I was going to go on to somewhere else. But the longer I stayed, it just, it was like, man, this place is really special. And I love everybody, and everybody really works and interacts together. And it's such a big organization, but I literally know everybody.
I'm sixty-six years old, so I didn't really think I was going to be here all this time. But you know what? It's really been an honor and a privilege. And I have grown quite a bit because like those, my first year I was contracted, then five years with the county. I started as a foreign language interpreter, became team leader, and now the supervisor of our unit. So, you know, it's, it's been quite a, quite a trip.
So Katie is one of the best people that you will ever have the pleasure of meeting. And if you haven't met her, you ought to, because she will raise your spirits.
I value you, your presence, your leadership. And I'm very thankful for your willingness to have taken a risk on yourself and on Union County. And I appreciate your leadership and hope that you'll be here another fifteen years.
It's nice to take the time and to obviously hear some things from your leadership that you're doing well. It kind of confirms what you're doing and makes you feel good about, you know, where you work. And the people really care about you. The people make the county, and it's all about who you work with, work for, work beside. Really, if you didn't have great people, it would not be a great place to work. But we have great people here.
Thank you so much for coming out and celebrating all of your work, your teammates, your fellow employees here. And JR, our chairman, is here. I want to thank him for coming. And he said when he came here, he loves to come to this because he gets to hear all these stories, all these things about you and about the folks that you work with. It's important to be able to share those things. I think we offer a whole lot of opportunity here at the county, and I'm just so proud that you're here and that you're celebrating each other. I want to say thank you again, and I hope you have a great rest of your day.
Well, congratulations to all the award winners. I mean, from five years all the way to thirty. Y'all are awesome. Y'all do all the heavy lifting. You do all the county's work. I cannot say enough good things about you. I do understand that one of the county employees was not able to make the award ceremony. And I'll turn it over to County Manager Brian Matthews, let him talk to that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Patrick Nyland has been with us for five years. He has managed to skip out on every one of the last few award ceremony, conveniently so that he would not be recognized. You should have gone to the ceremonies, buddy. Really, the only thing I want to say is, again, Patrick is a great addition to this team here. When he started to work for the county, I actually went to see him. He was the manager in Wingate, and I sat down with him. And I said, come on and work for the county, it'll be fun. And then Patrick asks me on a regular basis, when is it going to be fun? But we do actually have some fun. I, but again, thank you for all you do for the county. Thank you to everyone and all of our team members here. It's great to celebrate our employees, but again, thank you, Patrick.
Let's give one more standing ovation to Patrick and all the county employees for a great job they did. The next item is Consideration of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. I would like to add one item to the business agenda, Consideration of a Resolution Related to Employee Volunteer Time Off in Hurricane Helene Relief Efforts. Also, are there any other motions or discussion regarding either the consent agenda or the business agenda? I believe Commissioner Williams had something. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really just wanted to not remove from consent, but just as allowed in our rules of procedure, discuss an item in consent. And everybody can find that on pages seven and eight, if you have your agenda packet. And the item is 24-664, Fund Request for Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office Contract. Again, I'm not pulling this off consent, just want to talk a little bit about it. Indeed, I think it would be a mistake to pull it off consent and vote against it. I think everybody on this board is, you know, certainly, I think, prepared to vote for it. And for good reason. You know, this, this item is a continuation from board action that we took back, I think, in March of this year to engage with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office to help us with our inmate population. Because our jail is overcrowded. We've got a jail that has a design capacity for, I think, two-hundred-and-sixty-four inmates. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Sheriff, or Tony, but over the last two and a half, three weeks, I don't think there's been a day that we've been under that, under two-hundred-and-sixty-four. And indeed, there have been some days where we were over three-hundred. We need a new jail. That's what this item screams to us. And, you know, the jail that we have now was built in the 1990s when our county population was not six figures. It was under a hundred thousand. And we've done a lot of growing since then. I think one time I calculated it was almost two-hundred-and-seventy percent increase in population from when that jail was finished. And, you know, we, we need a new jail sooner rather than later. And, you know, there are consequences to running out of space for the inmates. You know, there are decisions made, hard decisions, that are made by magistrates and judges and our district attorney and the assistic district attorney and the sheriff's office regarding, you know, who we put in that space. And, you know, sometimes you hear complaints about, well, somebody got no bail or got low bail and, and, but, but that's a consequence. That's a consequence of this problem. We have a number of very fine programs that the sheriff's office either administers or community partners, our 501(c)(3)'s administer in the jail. Those programs are often unavailable when these inmates have to go elsewhere. So again, I have no problem with this item. I think, you know, you know, I strongly support it. The hundred thousand dollars that we're asking to cover it, I think, is imminently reasonable. But what I would ask of my colleagues respectfully is this. You know, I understand that we've engaged a consultant, that this consultant has been out at the sheriff's office and have, has spoken with the folks there and has examined the detention center. And that hopefully, before the end of this year, we'll have some analysis and perhaps a recommendation for this board. And again, respectfully, I would ask my colleagues, because I won't be here when that happens, probably. I would respectfully ask my colleagues that once you have that study, once you have that recommendation, to act with some speed, to act with some alacrity, and go ahead and put some money into a plan to design a new jail. Because it's desperately needed. It's not something that is popular to do, but we need to do it. And if we don't do it, you know, a judge may very well tell us we have to, which is how the current jail was built. So that's really all I had to say, Mr. Chairman. And I'm happy to make the motion to pass the consent agenda as presented. And again, thank you for allowing me to make those remarks on this item.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Hill.
This would be a question for staff. So regarding this item here, how many inmates would this essentially fund? Do we have a number on that?
I believe it's fifty, I think, but I'm not positive. Like sheriffs that offices here, they could probably speak to that.
Okay. Well, I mean, if we could get some numbers on that, that would be great. It doesn't have to be tonight. But what I, what I'll say is this, is that, you know, this board is, has discussed, you know, the new jail facility. And, and I think that there's some agreement, at least on this board, that it's not so much that we don't need a new jail facility. I, I think that what we have to be careful with is making sure that we don't repeat the, the same mistakes that we made in the past. I think that, you know, if you enter into this type of a project, we have to make sure that we know what type of needs we have and whether the project is addressing those needs adequately with responsibility to the folks that ultimately pay the bill, and that's the taxpayer. So, so yeah, I'll be in favor of the consent agenda and also this motion. But I can't stress enough the responsibility that this board has to those who ultimately pay the bill, and that's all of you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Before we approve the consent and business agenda, I also have one item I would like to add to the business agenda. I would like to move that the board adopt, add to the business agenda an item to adopt a resolution authorizing the use of volunteer time off for assistance with Hurricane Helene reliefs. So Commissioner Williams made the motion to approve the business of the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, indicate by. Also, do we have a motion to approve the business agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. County Manager Matthews.
So previously, you had the rezoning hearings. One of the applicants for the first two actually did come in late. There was no opposition for those rezonings. They were requested, they were unanimously recommended for approval by the Land Use Board. They are asking if the board would consider adding that to the agenda for you to take action on. It is CZ242024002 and CZ2024001. Again, that is the board's discretion, but that applicant did come and ask if you would consider that.
Mr. Chairman, as you're considering adding that item to the business agenda as well as the volunteer time off for the hurricane effort, whenever the board is ready to make a decision about what those items are, if you would maybe call for a vote on adding those items to the business agenda, whatever they may be.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we listen to the applicant on those two public hearing items and, and move that we add item 24668. That would be Public Hearing Resoning Petition, CZ-2024-002LI, as well as item 24-669. That is the Public Hearing Resoning Petition, CZ2024-001RA40 to the Business Agenda.
Okay. And also, I've already made the motion to add the item in regards to the volunteer time for the employees. All in favor of the motion, indicate by.
Aye.
All opposed? Is that good with you, Mr. K?
Which motion were you taking a vote on there?
On adding all three of those items to the Business Agenda.
If you want to take them up as a consolidated item, you can do that as long as everybody is clear on what they're voting for.
Yes, sir.
We are now at the business portion of our agenda. First item of business is item 24248, Program Update, Advanced Meter Infrastructure and Customer Portal. I will recognize Aubrey Lofton, Union County Water Plan and Resource Management Director, for this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't know how to get the screen back. We'll worry about that in a second. I appreciate your time this evening. In addition to me, we have Amy McCaswell, the Director of Business Operations, to speak. And we also have Mr. White Glove Service, Jason McBride. He's our Meter Services Manager. He just was recognized for his twenty-year service award. Him and his team have been instrumental in getting this project to where it is and as many, as many other employees who weren't able to come. many, as many other employees who weren't able to come tonight. And we're very excited because this is a fantastic news story. It's a, it's a real opportunity for our utility to move forward and modernize and meet a lot of the expectations our customers have. I can't, but I can see it up there, so that's going to be good enough. It's pretty just blank, so. All right. So tonight, we're going to be talking about our advanced metering infrastructure and our customer portal projects. So we'll cover what AMI is, that's advanced metering infrastructure, how we got to this point with the project, and where we're at, what's happening next, as well as the customer portal and how they feed off of each other. And we'll end with some real-world impacts that we've already seen from the information we have so far and how we plan to use it. So as far as meter reading technology, back in the day, you used to walk around and look at every single meter and record the reading. We used to have to physically approach every single meter in our system. And in roughly the mid 2000s, we transitioned to what was called AMR, Automated Meter Reading, where essentially you could drive by and collect the readings through a little device. And that's what we've been doing since that time. We're moving towards AMI, the infrastructure, essentially moving wireless with that, no more driving around to every location. And now we're able to connect to that from the office. There's really numerous customer benefits, but the main ones are that there's that real-time access for customers to see, see their information and really help inform them about their usage and help manage that. Things like leak monitoring really can change what, what folks are experiencing with their bills. They can get ahead of those leaks rather than respond after it's already turned into a large bill. And of course, we can help support our customers better when we're understanding their usage. And on the utility side, these meters needed replacing anyway. We were getting towards the end of useful life in a lot of our meters, so we needed to make a decision. But we can, again, greatly, greatly reduce those truck rolls for collecting meters or even just the one-off readings that we have to do. We get better leak detection on both the customer side and our system side, and a lot of more real-time data and more data in general. When you think about, we go from one reading per month per customer to one per hour per customer. And that can really help us with things like our IBT management or future rate studies, master planning. There's a lot of uses for that information. So AMI, essentially, it's connecting that customer to the cloud and so that we can access that information in the office and also the customers can access themselves in their home. So really just connecting that signal and, again, no longer having to go manually collect And just to give you all some comfort, we are not the first. We did not invent this. This really started in the electric utilities. Y'all might be familiar with it, in the early 2000s. And really in the 2010s, it started to shift to the water sector. A lot of these utilities have already been on AMI for five or more years. Some of them are just starting to go that way. I saw Charlotte Water this summer did an RFP. I, I was surprised to see that they're finally moving towards AMI. And we do have some partners just across the state line in South Carolina, Lancaster County Water and Sewer District and Chesterfield County Rural Water Company. They're just across the border from us, and they are both actually utilities that we went and looked at when we were at the beginning of our project to help understand the potentials. So the main components that you'll see in an AMI system is essentially at the customer location, there's two main parts. There's the meter and the transmitter. So essentially, what's the item that's registering the flow as it goes through the meter? And then it's sending it to another location. So you can kind of see different layouts here with our beautiful meter box there in the top right, what it all looks like packaged up. And as far as the network side, we have 19 towers spread all over Union County. And we have two different types. So you can see in the picture on the left, kind of a standalone tower. And then picture on the right, if we have something tall that already exists, like a water tank, we're able to put a tower on top of it, take advantage of that height. And both of those types of towers connect to what's in the middle, which is a base station, essentially the network that's managing that data and those signals. So if you look at this map, we're looking at those towers spread across the county. So again, really evenly roughly distributed using a radio frequency to transmit, again, back to, to the cloud and that we can gather in the utility. You could also notice that this map extends into South Carolina. So because Lancaster County Water and Sewer District actually uses the same technology as us, the census platform, we're able to use their towers as well. Our, our contractor, Ferguson, was able to set up a secure network where we're able to share those towers. So we have some areas that have poor connection around the county lines. We're still struggling to understand those. As we convert, customers will understand that exact scenario better, but we're able to use their towers and them to use us, but all the data is segregated, so we don't have access to theirs, they don't have access to ours. But we saw an immediate improvement in those kind of fringes of the system where you can see a tower in Lancaster County, but that would benefit Union County customers and vice versa. Again, we won't know the full benefit until we get to the end of the implementation, but it was a very exciting cost-saving benefit for us and for Lancaster County. So looking at the history of the project, this, this was not new for us. We've been working on this for quite a while. Going back to 2018, we did a feasibility study, and that's when we were looking at the other utilities and trying to understand what we needed. And based on those recommendations in 2019, we chose the new technology. So that way, as we started replacing all of these failing meters, we knew that we were using something that we could leverage in the future. So every meter we've been installing since 2019 is one of the new census meters. And even at the time, we couldn't read it through AMI. We, we were able to use it in the future without having to convert. They were just waiting for the network to be built. Back in November of 2021 is when we actually executed the contract to, to build the network with Ferguson, is the census, census technology. And back in November 21, we stood here in front of you and said it would take two years. Obviously, that is not the case. And in reality, we ended up getting some major supply chain issues. Essentially, just the transmitters were basically unavailable. We, we didn't even have enough to do new meter sets, let alone a widespread replacement program. So really, we just had to cool it for a while. We focused on some of the things we could, implementing software on the backend systems and getting those all paired up. And then thankfully, this year, the supply chain really started to break loose and, and we were able to schedule the, the widespread rip and replace, as we call it. This year, we began billing in a hybrid method. So we actually drive by for some of our customers and we bill through AMI for others. And, and then on, in August, we had Ferguson actually send their crew onsite. And so now they're actually in the field doing this work every day. And based on the timeline and what we've seen so far in terms of the speed of that crew, we expect we should be complete by next summer. So as far as the change-out process for a customer, again, our contractor Ferguson is the one that's doing the work. It takes roughly 30 minutes for a residential customer, that standard three-quarter inch meter. And they'll be typically out of water for 10 to 15 minutes. There's sometimes other work required. There might be other damage to the box. There might be a lid replacement, drilling holes. As you can see, they, the transmitter actually sticks, sticks through the lid so it can connect better with the towers. And Ferguson does have a hotline for customers, so if they have any issues during the replacement that they can call them and get some quick service. So as far as this project so far, again, since Ferguson has been onsite in August, late August, they have interacted with roughly 3,800 accounts, customers. 1,300 of those were full, full change-outs, it was both the meter and the transmitter. About 2,500 was just the transmitter itself. It's called an MXU. And you can see kind of some quantities over time in each month. Again, they ramped up really at the end of August, and most of the work has happened in, in September. And we get these reports on a weekly basis to keep tabs on the work and have staff monitoring this on a daily basis. Terms of the overall status of the project, we have roughly 62,500 meters and 43% were already AMI capable when Ferguson showed up. Again, we've been installing these since 2019, and then as they fail, we've had to replace them with new census meters. And so that leaves 35,600 roughly as a part of this project. Previous slide, slide we saw, they had already changed more than 3,500, so we're, we're already at better than 10% of the change-out so far. Again, the oldest meters will need a complete replacement, but our Badger brand meters we started in, we still have some that are from 2013 or later. They just need a new transmitter, so those go a little bit quicker. So in terms of the system, you might be wondering where we were at doing these change-outs so far. So these non-contiguous blobs are showing each individual meters. So the first area we circled in red, the map is located on the right, and you can see those, again, each individual meter location. Everything green on the right map is completed. Everything that's blue, we will get back to shortly. Essentially, we have some really complicated billing windows where we are allowed to go into a certain area. We can't do a meter change-out while it's in the middle of being billed. And so we have a, a very small window of making that change in our billing system. So we essentially, when Ferguson was available onsite, we sent them to the area that we had just done the billing for, so they had roughly a month to do work. When it's time to do that bill again, they had to jump to the new location. And so that new location is up in that top right corner of that, the left-hand map. Again, the red circle shows the blow-up area on the right. And so this is the area that we're actively working in now to replace meters. When this area hits its billing window closing period, we'll jump back to that first area just to clean up all the remaining change-outs. And we'll just leapfrog around the county until we're done, based on, again, where that billing window tells us we can go. In terms of what's next for customers, again, this mass change-out by Ferguson, they'll see a truck like the one in the top right corner. The exact schedule, again, will depend on the speed of the crew, but also if they're able to send us additional crews. Again, hopefully completed by next summer. All of our large meter, non-residential customers, so this is schools, this is Pilgrim's Pride, this is restaurants, hotel, hospitals, will be near the end of the rollout. Larger, larger meters are more complicated in terms of scheduling it with the customer or even just, you know, logistically changing it out, and we're making sure that we're saving that for the end. And the main reason we're talking about this now is that there's a lot more customer outreach. You may have already heard about this, or you might be seeing more about this in the future. So all of our customers received an email about the project when we brought Ferguson onsite. And everyone, as it's coming closer to the area, gets a, a specific email saying, "We're coming to you now." Also, if you see that bottom left-hand picture, we have signs up in subdivisions when we're doing work, so people are aware. Top right, you can see we're putting door hangers on doors when the work has been executed, including that hotline number, so people know who to contact. And bottom right, you can see, example, we do have a website on the main, Union County website, a featured page with FAQs, current timeline that shows which subdivisions we're going to be in, et cetera. So we're trying to make sure everyone's aware of the work that's going on. So specific to the AMI, I just wanted to pause here in the presentation, see if you had any questions. And then I'll show you the portal.
Any questions for Ms. Loft?
All right. Well, no one wants a live demo because they'll always break. But I promise I have a bunch of actual screen grabs from a live working portal. That way, we know it'll work. So why, why do a new customer portal? We did have a portal. It basically is payments only. You can essentially view your bill and you can pay your bill. So this is adding a lot more functionality and capability to customers to help them understand their bills. And, I mean, now that we have the AMI data coming out, there's more to see. So it's a great time to pair those two together, and it gives customers, again, access to that near-real-time usage. Excuse me. And also allows them to communicate with customer service in a secure way. Of course, privacy of data is utmost important, so making sure that they have that, but in a safe manner. And there's also a lot more features that this portal can do, but it has to wait for our new customer information system. When we have a, a modern system, I think our current one is more than 20 years old. It, it's not ready for this, but when we get a new system in the next couple of years, we'll be able to make some connections and actually issue, you know, service requests and things like that from the portal. So a lot of future capability. So I'm going to now just show you a lot of screen grabs of what it looks like, like I said, rather than trying to hope it works. Question?
Vice Chairman Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aubrey, if you can just go back to the other slide there, and I'm sorry if I missed this. The third bullet says provide customers access to near-real-time usage.
Yes.
What, what do you mean by near-real-time?
Yeah, so it can depend a little bit. Some of it's signal strength. Could really probably nerd out, or some folks could nerd out, but essentially mostly same-day usage. Some customers might have a slightly lower level of service if they have a weaker signal. But I think you'll see some of the breakdowns in terms of what customers will be able to view. But usually, within a few hours for most customers, you can see usage. So if I looked at my account this morning, I'd probably see something up through 4:00 PM. So near-real-time, but not a, not an instant, if that makes sense. Much, much more real-time than what they're used to.
Yeah, well, I mean, the reason why I asked is because, you know, a lot of times, we, we see homeowners that have running toilets or, you know, lots of other issues there, and, and this could be advantageous to determining, you know, if you have an issue. So I, I think that that's, that's probably a really good feature.
Absolutely, yeah. That's one of our favorite features. I mean, for us on our side and for customers as well, that kind of self-service ability to look at alerts and have it warn them. And I'll kind of show you some of what this looks like. It's not necessarily the alerts explicitly. Some of the information that Amy's gotten, some later slides, you can see some of the alerts on those.
Thank you.
So this is what the main page looks like when folks enter. And this is an actual account. We've just hidden the, you know, identifying information, but all of the usage billing information is from a real customer. And so this is that main dashboard somebody would see when they log in, a nice overview of their billing information, their usage. And if you scroll down to the next, next slide, it's scrolling down on that main page, you can see some of the features that we really loved about this portal in particular is, is the analytics that it can give you. So for example, that top right corner, comparing yourself to this time last year. On the left side, they're comparing you to other types of customers, kind of typical customers in this database. For example, there's that who am I compared to box. It lets you know that this is, based on their database, the Watersmart database, with four occupants and a similar yard size. And if you say, well, I actually have six people in my house, and we have a swimming pool, and my yard's really, really small, you can click that update profile and start to customize your profile, and it gives you more targeted information to you. An example, too, in that bottom left-hand, that recommended, take a five-minute shower, it gives you an estimate of, of how much you can save. This is, again, based on the database, and it also calculates in things like your energy use. All right, so it's not just purely about water, but anytime you're using hot water, that costs you more than cold water. So it, again, based on your profile and the things that, how you're using water, it'll give you recommendations tailored to you. It's pretty cool. So it's got a lot of the payment things that you want in a portal. You can schedule a payment, you can set automatic payments, you can add different payment methods. Of course, you can see your history, what you've paid, when you've been billed. But the really cool features, if you can see my bias, is the usage side. So this would look probably like a typical bill has in the past, maybe a longer period of time. This is looking at monthly usage for this account. And in the top right, you can see you can customize the date range to see whatever you're looking for. But you can actually drill down into a single day, and you can hover, and these are each one-hour increments, and you can see that's measuring in 10 gallons. So you can see how much you're using down to the hour. And then you can see, you know, something happened at 10:00 AM, and they use 90 gallons instead of 10 or 20 like they'd use the rest of the day. So it really allows you to, when you have questions about, well, what happened on this day, you can actually look and see, well, what happened on this day? It's, it's pretty cool. Again, you can see that top right, you can adjust these, these sliders to see how much time you want. It also has that analytics portion with their Watersmart database. So it'll actually look at the signature of your water usage and give you an analysis of how you're using water overall. So you can see this customer's a pretty balanced user of different water types. No one type is really dominating this pie chart. If you hover again, you see irrigation is 13% of their usage based on an estimate. May not be exact, but this is their estimation. So again, this is a, this is a pretty common view to see comparing your usage this year versus last year. At the bottom, you can see in a quantification, 4.57 more, percent more this year than last year. Again, hovering gives you some, some more detail. And to help folks, you know, usually the biggest difference between last year and this year is the weather, and that can lead to irrigation or outdoor use. And so the next chart is giving you the weather. So it'll show you what the average temperature was. Again, that top right, you've got a custom scale. You can, you can toggle it between daily and monthly. And it'll also show you rainfall. So you can see the red line is temperature, the gray line is rainfall. And you can see this customer, they, they aren't a huge irrigator, but they're, they seem to use less water on the days that it rained. And that could be they have a working rain sensor, they're just very conscious of the, the rain, that they don't need to water, or it could just be coincidence, but something that I noticed. Again, just kind of comparing you to the database overall, what would an efficient user use? What are you using? Kind of average households. And the last one of these usage graphs is really to help you predict how much you're going to be using. So wherever you're at in the month, helping you project, are you, are you on track to meet your budget? Are you going to blow your budget? And, and you should probably adjust things now before the month is out. So this isn't necessarily responding to leaks, per se, but just, just higher usage than you're used to. used to, and maybe want to pay for. So this is really giving you, again, based on how you've been using this month, where you're trending to, and if it's different. And last on the portal is this secure messaging feature. So again, you're logging into a secure portal, and you're able to send us an information, a message, without having to go through email, call-in, just convenience, really. So now, I'm gonna have Amy come up here, and she's gonna talk about how we're leveraging this, and how awesome it's already been.
Thanks, Aubrey. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Amy McCaskill. I'm the Director of Business Operations for Union County Water, and we are super excited about the changes and the improvements that we're gonna be able to bring to our customers with these new tools. So we're gonna talk tonight a little bit more about how the utility, especially our folks in business operations, are beginning to leverage these new tools. In October of last year, our meter services team began monitoring census analytics. Census Analytics is our tool that kind of captures all the data, and we can see it as a whole. There are alarms that we can set to monitor. And one alarm that we saw as potentially low-hanging fruit for ourselves and for our customers was a 24-hour alarm notification. And so there's a report that our meter services team gets every day. It's for any accounts that have 24-hour continuous water usage on it. And so this would be uninterrupted flow for 24 hours at at least 10 gallons per hour. We have a text message that we send out to customers. If no response, we follow up with them, and we continually notify the customer via text for three days if they appear consecutively on this report. And if the alarm persists on the third day, and we haven't got a response, we try to call them and confirm if they've received our messages. We often hear customers say, "Well, I don't see any issues." And then we try to educate them. We point them to, we have a video tutorial showing them how to do something simple as a toilet di test to determine if they have a leak with the flapper of their toilet. It's amazing how much water goes through when you have a flapper that's loose and runs. You can lose two to three gallons a minute. So we, and we encourage our customers to perform this simple test before calling a plumber, right? We want to try to help them figure out and walk them through the other things that they can check before they have to spend money. This is just the message that they get, alerting them to that we've noticed 24-hour usage on their system. We have been super, received great responses from several, several customers since we've started this. We are so excited to be proactive instead of reactive, because a lot of times, before AMI, customers wouldn't know until they got their bill, which is already three weeks behind their reading, right? And then another billing period before we can check and make sure everything is corrected. So I have a couple testimonials for you. So this is what our census analytics look like, and you can see here, there is a spike, right? And so we notice that, and then we can go down, and we can drill into that and see that there's these, this 24-hour usage that has been happening. So in this particular case, our customer shared with us, after we reached out to him and he figured out what was going on, that they had been having some high bills for a while, and they weren't really sure, they couldn't figure it out, couldn't find anything. Their bills were upwards between $700 and $1,000 for a family of four. They were losing, we were able to determine 20 to 30 gallons per hour between the hours of 1:00 and 6:00 AM. And what they ended up finding out was that they had an underground line feeding their pool overflow that was leaking at a rate of 19,000 to 20,000 gallons in that tier-five pricing per month. So they were super thankful. In fact, they had said that they thought they might even have to move out of their home. And now, they're happy to tell us that because of Jason and his team, that they're gonna be able to maybe stay at retirement. So that was a, that was a great feel-good story for us, as well as another customer who was out of town when we notified him. And he had two leaks. One was really severe. He acknowledged that without this program, the water would have still been pouring and wasted. And we have, in circumstances, had customers call us after we've given them a notification that said, "I'm out of town. You know, can you do something for me?" And we just go and shut their meter off for them, so that they, the water doesn't continue to run and make any additional damage in their home. So not only is this data beneficial for us as the utility, to be more proactive for our customers, but it's very useful also to our customer service staff as they interact with customers on a daily basis. Actually, here's a few more customer comments that you can read that we're super thankful for our new program, a monitoring program. Customer service, we're able to help our customers, give them data now to pinpoint usage and patterns. This will be able to, right now, we're doing it for them, because they don't have access through the portal yet, but they'll, we'll be able to walk them through. The customer portal actually has a site where we can see exactly what they're seeing on their account, and we can walk them through anything that they need to do, as well as a management portion of the account, where we can receive messaging and that type of thing. This data, you know, once you have data, and you can pinpoint down to the hour and the time that you used water, or we see water usage, really helps to de-escalate. It's like the proof's in the pudding, and we're, you know, "This is where your water use was, and this is what time." And a lot of times, it just helps jog their memory. "Oh, yeah, I had visitors that weekend. You know, we had, you know, another family with us, so we're using more water." So this data helps us to guide and provide additional information to our customers and education for specific customer concerns. Our customer portal is going live Monday, the 28th. We're very excited. It's going in into, going live in conjunction with our new UC Water website. Our customers are gonna get a new experience. As Aubrey showed you, we are going to do our larger customers in 2025, really kind of tailor that communication to them, help them. And also, Aubrey mentioned, our customer information system replacement and other technology upgrades that are coming in the future. I will share a little funny with you. Our customer information system is 20 years old, maybe a little longer than that. And it freezes up on the frequent. And it's lovingly referred to as the Death Star by my folks in customer service. So we're super excited, that as we continually move forward in our technology, that we're gonna be able to be proactive, we're going to be able to assist customers in multiple ways. Wanted to give a shout-out to Liz and her team for the new website that's coming on the 28th. Erin and Megan have worked super hard, and we are, we are happy and feel like this is gonna be one of the best websites that our customers have ever had the opportunity to use. So it is coming on the 28th. It has improved design, layout on your, for your laptop, or your desktop, or your mobile. We're gonna have all kinds of information there about service alerts, water quality tips. Everything's gonna be arranged in a way that's easy to find. We're gonna have, it's integrated with our new portal. Payments can all be made there. There'll be a messaging center. And the new website will also have the information about the new portal, so that it can assist customers to get set up appropriately. So I know all this information about data, technology portals, all of that's great, and it's moving us toward that enhanced level of customer service that we're super excited about, that we really want to do. And we know we're only touching the tip of the iceberg, like with this 24-hour alarm, as we use this system. It's gonna bring more and more to the utility. And I just want to stop here and say, for a minute, I'd be remiss. This level of, this technology, my mama would not use it, right? She's not, she's not gonna call, she's not going to go on a log on her phone. And so for those who don't want that technology, we're still gonna have the same level of customer service for our water customers, our wastewater customers that want to call in and talk to somebody. My husband would rather talk to nobody. He'll chat, bot, he'll do whatever, as long as he don't have to talk to anybody except me. And he wants to talk to me when I come home about everything that happened during the day. But we're still gonna have folks that are here to listen, to be empathetic, and to be supportive of our customers. Last thing for me, Customer Service Week. A little bit about the history of Customer Service Week. This is an international celebration. Since 1991, Customer Service Group has sponsored Customer Service Week. And in 1992, US Congress proclaimed Customer Service Week the first full week in February. So we're celebrating it this week. And I'm gonna give a shout-out to all Union County customers, because we all serve our residents. All Union County Water customers, because we all serve our water customers. But I'm gonna tell, I want to talk to you just a little bit about our business ops team, and it's just my honor to be a part of them. And I'm gonna tell you that I think they're the hub of the utility. A lot of times, when introducing us by our groups to someone new, you'll say, "Aubrey and her team, they do the planning and the long-range stuff, and John and his team, they build the stuff, and Chris and his team, they operate on a daily basis." And then there's business operations. And I think I finally convinced them that business operations is the hub in the center of the wheel, because guess what? We talk to everybody. We go from customers, to engineering, to operations, to planning. We are that person. And even in our fiscal group, we are, we are kind of that hub between our county finance, our county procurement. So I'm just, it's my honor to serve with them. We have, so this is our breakdown for business operations. We have 14 FTEs in customer service. For contract workers, these are your folks that answer the calls, answer the phone calls, answer the emails. Meter services, Jason's group, they're the guys that are first out. If there's a water issue, they're any meter issues. And they're also our own call, our first on-call. After-hours on-call, they are the first ones to get the call. We have four FTEs in billing, and then we have six FTEs in fiscal services. And just think about these numbers as you look at some of this work. Our customer interactions and customer service in FY '24 was almost 80,000. This does not, this includes phone calls, emails, in-person walk-ins, mass communications, which are like boil-water advisories, added notices, high-use calls, pass due, that kind of thing. This has not taken to effect all the work orders and the call notes they have to log. Their logged calls, which is their call notes after each call, was over 100, almost 100,000 last year. And their work orders were, that they had to create, were 45,000. They take an average of 200 calls a day. Some days, we have upwards of 500. That's a lot. Those 500 days are hard. Our max day, like I said, was 579. Our meter services folks in FY '24 created, completed over 41,000 work orders, and these are anywhere from disconnections to leak verifications, meter inspections, set meters, move-in, move-outs, those type of things. Billing, our billing department processes approximately 560,000 bills every year, and have a high accuracy rate for that. Our fiscal services group, they manage all of our P-cards and those transactions. They do all of our AP transactions and all of our invoices as well. So this last slide is a photo that is just a representation of the great folks that I get to work with every day. We're celebrating them this week for all they do. The theme this year is Above &amp; Beyond, and they do that every day. And I'm super thankful for them. We had, I left you a little something in your chair from all of your friends at UC Water, and hope that every time you use one of them, there's a notepad in there, and there's some chopstick, and some hand sanitizer, and there's a stress ball, because who doesn't need a stress ball, right? It's a great one, too. It's got the little poppies in it. It's really good. So we hope that every time you use one of these, that you'll think about our, your folks here at the utility, and that you'll feel confident in the great work that the utility's doing. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. The next item of business is item 24662, bid award for 12 Mile Creek WRF 9 MGD expansion. I will recognize John Schutak, Union County Water Engineering Director for this item.
Learn from Aubrey's mistakes on the monitor. Just look at the screen up there. So thanks for the pro tip there. Chairman Raul, members of the board, management team, thanks for the time tonight. Tried to be quick this evening. Tonight, I'll be talking about the 9 million gallon-a-day expansion to our 12 Mile Creek facility, and specifically, the bid award for the construction of that. So I'll start off talking a little bit about the background of the facility and the project, let you know where we stand with the project today. Then I'll cover funding as an overview, basically talking all things fiscal, and then wrap it up with the actions that we have requested of the board this evening. So jumping right in, the 12 Mile Creek facility is Union County's largest treatment facility. It has capacity of 7.5 million gallons a day. It was originally constructed in 1997, and it has, with a capacity of 2.5 million gallons a day. And it was upgraded to 6 million gallons a day of capacity in 2007. And by the close of 2019, we had increased that capacity yet again to 7.5 million gallons. Currently, the average daily flows are at approximately 5.3 MGD, or 71% of the plant's rated capacity. And when you consider permitted and obligated flows, and this means flows that have been permitted but are not yet connected to the system, those numbers increase to 6.9 million gallons a day, or 92% of the plant's capacity. So expansion to, the next expansion increment to 9 MGD is necessary to serve both current and future wastewater treatment needs within that 12 Mile Creek service area. Little bit about the project. It includes a lot. We're doing work down at the Influent Pump Station. We're touching the grit facility with some improvements there, adding equipment in the blower building, improving distribution system, piping downstream of the aeration basins, doing work in the secondary treatment system, including clarifier improvements and sludge pumping improvements. We're also touching the solids handling facilities, in addition to adding chemical feed systems, and of course, electrical and control systems improvements that are required to support all of those upgrades that we're making all over the plant. The real takeaway here is that we're not really focused on one single area of the plant, as far as the upgrade goes and the increase in capacity. The entire plant is being touched. So it's everything from the influent, all the way to the outflow. So where do we stand with the project today? Well, we're standing here talking about the bid awards, so we've completed design and permitting, and we initially advertised the project for bids back in June of this year. The first bid opening was in August. However, we only received one bid. So for our procurement policy, that was returned unopened, and the project was re-advertised. That second bid opening was scheduled for September 10th. This time, we received two bids. This time, we received two bids. And of those two bids, Adams Robinson was found to be the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of approximately $50.3 million. So as I said, we've completed design and permitting. We've advertised the project and received bids. So we're here tonight talking about the construction contract award. Assuming that goes forward tonight, we would expect construction to commence basically the first of the year, going through contracting over the next couple of months, getting through the holidays, really getting going in earnest in January. It's got a 30-month total, excuse me, a total of 30 months in construction. So we expect it to be complete mid-2027. Now that we've talked about what the project entails and, and the schedule to complete this, I want to, I want to start talking a little bit about the financials here. So top half of this slide, you're looking at the project cost items. As I said, we've completed design and permitting and have expended approximately $2.2 million on that effort. Our construction bid came in at $50.3 million. And we have construction administration services scoped out for approximately $3.1 million. Brings a total project cost up to about $55.7 million. Now, the table you see below on the, on the lower half of the slide there, those are our funding sources because we, we budget and then we, we identify where the funds are going to come from. In this case, we have, this project has $25.2 million in state funding attached to it. We've identified $14.8 million in system development fees, about $5 million in cash. And we had initially identified about $3.6 million as part of a future revenue bond issuance to bring the total initial project budget up to 48.5 million. Obviously, the, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Vice Chair.
John, just for clarification, when we're looking at the project funding sources here, when we say state funding, is that, is that ARPA dollars? You know, can you qualify that a little bit for us?
No, they are not ARPA dollars. It is, it is a direct budget allocation from the state.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Certainly. So that listing of funding sources got us to our original budget of 48.5 million. Obviously, that's lower than, than our project costs have come in at. And that's because our, our construction cost was originally estimated at about 43.5 million, which lines up well with the approximately $5 million in professional services costs. So that's how we got to that 48.5 million number. But in order to, to fund this project, we've got to bring some additional revenue into it and identify that funding source. And that's what CPOs 335(c) and 377(a) do. It's moving seven and a half million from the line item, from the East Fork Interceptor project, from specifically from the line item for land acquisition over to the 12 Mile Expansion Project, the construction line item. And that would bring our total budget up to $56 million, which is sufficient to fund the project cost of 55.7 million. Now, I do want to talk a little bit about what we mean by future revenue bond issuance or future revenue bond proceeds. It's important to understand what future actually is because that's a futurist problem, right? So in order to better understand that, we went back to our contractor, Adams Robinson, and asked him, what do you expect the cash expenditure to look like on this project? Because we're obviously not spending $55 million day one. We're going to spend that over the 30-month duration. So we got a very high-level cash flow. And the important thing to take away from, from this disbursement here is that we have the $25.2 million in state funding and the $14.8 million in system development fees that are funding this project. That's about $40 million worth of funding. So that, that additional funding, either the cash or the projected revenue bonds, aren't going to be needed until we're in FY '27, basically the latter half of 2026. So we, we have time to figure out what that revenue bond issuance needs to look like. And we'll work with our partners in finance to make sure that we get that right because a bond issuance really has to meet three basic criteria. It's got to be enough money to cover the need. It's got to be available at the right time. And it's got to fit within our fiscal model. So talking about the fiscal piece of this, you know, we, we do continue to have funding challenges, but we are able to bring solutions to those challenges to you. So in this case, our, our costs have exceeded the budgeted amounts. However, the funding shortfall can be met by moving those dollars, like I said, from the East Fork Interceptor project, from that land acquisition line item over to the 12 Mile Creek Expansion Project construction line item. And we plan to replenish the funds for that East Fork, that we'd be taking from the East Fork Interceptor project with either remaining funds from projects that may close out here in the near future or through future budget appropriations. However, that may be necessary or some combination of both. And one important thing to understand here is that taking the funding from the East Fork project is not going to impede its progress. So we have design scheduled to begin in FY '25, and we're just starting that, that process. But the funds are available to advance that design, so the project's going to move forward as planned. We're, we're not holding this back. We're not delaying it. So I just wanted to make that clear. And just as a reminder, our capital program does account for escalation. It's at a rate of four and a half percent, and that's year over year. So if we have a project in, you know, 2025, if we're not executing it until 2027, there's four and a half percent, two years running, that, that's added on to that budget. However, in recent years, market conditions have raised costs faster than we would have projected. So we review our capital plan year over year, and we, we update our budgets, make sure everything works. We also compare it with the results of our fiscal audit because that establishes our, our year-end financial position and tells us available balances and things like that to make sure that we have the funding we need in order to execute the capital plan that you all have adopted. And if we, if we need to make changes to that capital plan, either by changing where, where projects are slotted in time, to, to delay or defer expenditures, or to adjust rates and fees, those types of things are going to be identified and brought back to this board for discussion at a future date. So as I said, we do have a number of actions here, kind of a laundry list of items. And just summarizing these, looking for you all to adopt the resolution for the award of the project, authorize the award of the construction contract to Adams Robinson in the amount of $50.3 million. Similarly, accept the scope of engineering services with Hazen and Sawyer for $3.1 million. And then, excuse me, adopt the two CPOs, moving those dollars from the East Fork Interceptor project to the 12 Mile Expansion Project. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Schutak?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the, the explanation here. You know, when we're looking at the overage, you know, from what was budgeted to what we're looking at here with the bid, I, I think it's important, you know, for us to get a good comprehension of where we're at, where we're going, what we're doing, because this is not a, a light sum of money. So, so I appreciate the presentation. The, the overages here for, for the bid versus what was budgeted, can that mainly be attributed to, you know, just a number of things such as supply chain and, and just increasing costs all around? Is that, is that the number one contributing factor here?
It, it's really related to the construction market. So it's materials, it's labor. It's, we're, we're fighting headwinds on costs.
And when you say that we're not going to impede the, the progress there with the East Fork, you know, one thing that I want to be careful about is on slide number 10, should modifications to the CIP be necessary? For example, slowing down projects, modifying rates and fees, they will be identified and brought to the board at a future date. That's one of the things that worries me, is modifying those rates, you know? So, you know, listen, I'm not, I'm not opposed to proceeding forward, you know, with, with 12 Mile. But the last thing that I want to visit is modifying those utility rates.
Certainly. And apologies if I wasn't clear, but I, just to expand a little bit on, on why we review the capital plan every year. One, we get updated budgets, so we have a more realistic idea year over year of what projects are going to cost. And number two, it follows on the heels of our audit. So that not only helps us with the projects with budget side, so what are we expecting to spend? But on the audit side, it also helps us because if we have a drought year, maybe our revenues on the water side are higher. Maybe our investment earnings are higher. So there's a balance that happens there, where maybe you're expending more, maybe you earn more, maybe you're expending less, maybe you earn less. But that's why we review that every year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Weeb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thanks, John, for the presentation. I also have a question about the East Fork. On the existing timeline, when, what's the target date for land acquisition? When would you like, when would you like or when would you need to have that accomplished?
So we're starting design now. It's, that project was slated for a, basically a one-year design period. So we'd be into fiscal '26 when we were looking for those land acquisition dollars.
Okay. Well, that's the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
And to be clear, the land acquisition dollars for projects like this would come from the enterprise fund, is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
Okay. So if we do have a shortfall, then really the only thing that, or if we don't meet the, the projections there to cover the costs that were taken from the East Fork Project, the only recourse we would have would be to look at rate increases?
No, no, there are other options that the board can certainly look at. That is delaying other projects, essentially shifting funds from, from those projects. It could be from other sources such as system development fees or if we have investment earnings. We won't know those things until much later, but it isn't always about having to raise rates. Now, I'm not going to say that that's not an, an ultimate requirement if the board has a, an idea of exactly what you want to accomplish and when you want to accomplish it. If you are very strict and you hold the line on, I want these projects done in a certain timeframe, the only way may be to raise rates. But it's really going to depend on the circumstances at the time. We try to bring you options, show you what the impacts are, and then you make an informed decision on whether you want to, you slow projects down or you want to move forward, understanding it, it may affect rates.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Schutak?
Thanks again, John.
Very welcome. Thank you for the time this evening.
No, we, we actually do, the items that John showed, there are, those are the items we do need the board to take action on.
Can you show those items, Governor? Sorry? These are enumerated in the, in the agenda item word for word because I, I do not believe that these are exactly worded the same.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, if you wish to make a motion to approve that, you could simply reference the action requested in Agenda Item blank, blank, rather than read all five of those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the actions recommended for item 24662 bid award of 12 Mile Creek WFR-9 MGD expansion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye. The next item of business is the item added to the agenda earlier this evening, consideration of a resolution related to employee volunteer time off and Hurricane Helene relief efforts. I'll now recognize an earlier award winner, Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you for the board for consideration of this item tonight. We know it was a late addition, but we've, we feel it's warranted. Before I get into the actual request, I just want to talk a little bit about Hurricane Helene and what Union County's role has been in some of the, the response. You see some of the videos and some of the pictures of what's going on in Western North Carolina, and it's hard to imagine the devastation that some of these communities are facing. We, we had some damage, we had some rain and wind, but it's nowhere near what they are dealing with in, in, in the West. We are on calls frequently with the state managers and hearing some of the managers and what they're dealing with. They are concerned about making payroll by pay, for paying overtime for deputies and water employees. They have bills for a million dollars worth of cleanup when their general fund budget is only $600,000. So it's, it's, it's pretty scary stuff for some of those folks. So as, as the county and some of our, our partners, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we have been able to do for some of them. We've had several volunteer fire departments that have sent resources, both personnel and apparatus to help, Bakers Volunteer Fire Department, Stallings, Wesley Chapel, and Mineral Springs. City Monroe Swift Water Rescue Team, they have two water rescue teams. They actually pre-deployed to Jackson County. Before the storm was over, they had performed 85 water rescues, and then they stayed for a week and a half after that, helping with search and rescue efforts. So they just got home last Saturday. That's been away from their families for two weeks straight, assisting with relief efforts. EMS has sent paramedics up there to assist. Our, our, our folks, several departments have helped out. EM and the Fire Marshal's Office, they have kind of served as the, the lead group to make sure that the resources we have available are getting to where they need to go. So they have coordinated with the state office, the state fire marshal, to make sure these folks are getting where they need to be. 911, there were, at one point, there were 14 counties that didn't have active 911. We were taking Yancey County's 911 calls up until 10 o'clock this morning. Cooperative Extension, they have been running supplies up and back to the, the mountains pretty consistently over the last couple of weeks. Environmental Health, Union County Sheriff's Office, Social Services, Public Health, UC Water has deployed crews to assist with getting water and sewer utilities back connected. A lot of that infrastructure, infrastructure was ripped out of the ground, and our folks are up there assisting, trying to get those water lines back run. Finance, building code, and HR, and that's just two weeks into this thing. This cleanup effort is going to take years. And I think what we have seen as part of this is, we were fortunate in this storm, but if there is ever a time when Union County needs some of the resources, there will be no shortage of state resources that will be willing to come to us. That's what we've seen. So getting to the request at hand, our personnel resolution allows for volunteer time off. Up to 16 hours can be taken to volunteer with local nonprofits. We would request a exemption to that. The resolution presented in front of you would allow our employees to use those 16 hours to volunteer with relief efforts for Hurricane Helene. So this would allow them to volunteer with either local nonprofits up there, governments up there, or nonprofits from other areas of the state that are going up there to assist. So the resolution is presented in front of you, Jason, anything about the resolution you want to explain or it's pretty straightforward? It's, this would go into effect retroactively to September 23rd and stay into effect till the end of the calendar year.
Any questions for Deputy County Manager Nylund? Any Vice Chairman else?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate you bringing this to us. But, you know, I'll say, I've been so proud, not only of our staff, but our entire county, you know, through this whole ordeal. You know, the people of Union County have pitched in and, and they've, they've gone above and beyond to try to help our neighbors. And so I'm extremely proud of where I live, extremely proud of the people here. And, and more importantly, I would be honored to make the motion that, that we adopt the resolution authorizing the use of volunteer time off for assistance with Hurricane relief, Hurricane Helene relief efforts.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? And I'd like to say I definitely second what the Vice Chairman said. I think we all do. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Our next two items are, we added to the agenda earlier, Item Number 24668 and Item 24669. Item 24668 is CZ 2024-002, and Item 24669 is CZ 2024-001. These were the rezoning petitions from earlier in the meeting.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, even though these are both related to each other, since they're zoning amendments, it would be my recommendation to take separate votes on each of these.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll start with 24669 CZ 2024-001. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adopt the ordinance approving revision to the official zoning map of Union County, North Carolina. That's first and foremost, and second, adopt the consistency and reasonable statement for approval for CZ 2024-001. And Mr. County Attorney, Mr. Cade, do I need to read in this consistency and reasonable statement, or is that sufficient?
That should be sufficient, to just read the motion presented there.
Okay. That is my motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to 24668, that's CZ 2024-002.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I will make the motion to approve and adopt the ordinance approving revision to the official zoning map of Union County, North Carolina, and to adopt the consistency and reasonable statement for approval for CZ 2024-002.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by aye. I will now recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for his comments.
On the comments, I'd like to say thank you to all the county staff, all our volunteers, all of the efforts that, that our staff has gone to to help with our western North Carolina neighbors. Really appreciate everything that everyone's done. Thank you very much.
And I, I can't talk about that stuff too much, I tell you. I just reiterate what he said. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I'd like to thank those citizens that showed up this evening. I realize we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have any informal comments tonight, but, but we did have participation. We had participation there during the public hearing process, and, and I want to express my appreciation for you folks coming and making your voice heard this evening. You know, I will just echo the, the same comments about Hurricane Helene. You know, we're missing Commissioner Merrill this evening, and she is, actually, she spent her day in western North Carolina, helping out with relief efforts there, and she was unable to get back in time for the meeting. So, you know, once again, I'm proud of my county, I'm proud of the people here, and thank you.
Commissioner Weave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comments tonight, other than I echo Commissioner Helms and the chairman's excellent comments.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would like to praise the sheriff's office for, seemed like they were a little bit ahead of the game in, in gathering things together and sending articles of, well, just supplies to the western part of the state. I had a friend reach out to me, and, and he was talking about the devastation, and he pointed out a certain need, and I, and I couldn't find anything to, the shelves weren't at Walmart. We couldn't find anything to send up that way. Another friend said, I think the sheriff's office has a trailer ready to go. And I said, you kidding? He said, no, I think they've got stuff ready to go. So I called the sheriff's office, and Tony Underwood said, yes, sir, yes, sir, we're ready. Send me an address. And within the next morning, they had the supplies they needed. Then I got a voicemail that talked about the timing, said that they had ran out of supplies at the Lake Lower Lodge, but being that our trailer pulled in, they were able to shift those supplies from our trailer and send them directly to the people at the Lake Lower Lodge. So it was just, we hit the target right there. And I would like to echo the words that have been stated here this evening about the generosity of the people in Union County. And during this time, it really makes you proud to, to tell people you're from Union County. Also, I would like to express my gratitude to all the folks who reached out to us during the loss of my mother-in-law, who we lost about seven or eight days ago, and we appreciate all the kind words and condolences. So that's all I have.
Well, I put my paperwork up, but I think I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. I believe that's what comes up next. All in favor? Aye. Thank you for attending.